Thank you.
Mike, our community has been pretty shaken up in this past month. And so, there's so many things to pray about. With your permission, I'd like to read a prayer that was written in the late 1920s and offered in song to America in 1938. So if you'll bow your heads with me, please. While the storm clouds gather far across the sea, let us pledge allegiance to a land that's free. Let us all be grateful for a land so fair as we raise our voices in a solemn prayer. God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with a light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans white with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home. And Heavenly Father, we do pray that you would give healing and peace and comfort to all of those who were affected by what happened at Sparks Middle School. And we pray that you would give our community comfort and peace, knowing that we've gathered together around those who were hurting. We ask you, Lord, to give this fine council the leadership that they need to lead our community forward. And that you would bless their meeting today and be with them each day as we have elected them to lead us in this great community called Sparks, Nevada. We pray these things in your precious name. Amen.
I don't have any speaking cards, but anybody in the public wish to make a comment? Now's the time. Okay, see you none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Okay, we have a motion in a second. That was too quick. But, Adam, you vote yes?
Yes.
Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Number three is recommendation to approve the minutes of our October 28 meeting. Need a motion?
Motion.
Julia? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, oh, I'm sorry. Please vote. I'll probably blow that 16 times today. Passes unanimously. Number four is announcements, presentation, and recognition. 4.1 proclamation for pancreatic cancer awareness month. Anybody here to accept that? Okay, see you none. Julia, you want to go ahead and read it anyway?
Whereas in 2013 in the United States, an estimated 45,220 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer and 38,460 will die from the disease. And whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers and is the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States. And whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is usually too late for an optimistic prognosis. And 73% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 94% die within the first five years. And whereas approximately 360 new cases diagnosed and 350 deaths will occur in Nevada in 2013. And whereas the US Congress passed the Recalcitrant Cancer Research Act last year, which calls on the National Cancer Institute to develop scientific frameworks or strategic plans for pancreatic cancer and other deadly cancers, which will help provide the strategic direction and guidance needed to make true progress against these diseases. And whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the national organization serving the pancreatic cancer community in Sparks and nationwide through a comprehensive approach that includes public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. And whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in Sparks support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as those who have lost their lives to this disease and are committed to nothing less than a cure. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim November 2013 as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to 4.2, presentation of the Sparks Middle School Compassion Fund. Who's going to do this? Okay?
Jim, I'm Senior Planner. We put together a presentation that we invited two folks from the Community Foundation to give a presentation to the City Council, Tracy and Chris. And they're going to give a quick presentation on what the City of Sparks has been doing with the SMS, Sparks Middle School Compassion Fund. So if you'll have them up, Mr. Protem.
Okay, come on down. Welcome. Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Chris Askin, President of the Community Foundation.
Tracy Turner, Chief Philanthropy Officer.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here.
I wanted to thank you for having us here today. You know, we were very honored to be able to step in quickly and help with this fund. Tracy's going to describe the activities of the fund that have happened in the last three weeks. But I did want to thank you again for calling the Community Foundation. We're 15 years old, and if you'll allow me just a minute, I'll give you just a quick overview. We were started 15 years ago. Community Foundation is a public charity that anybody can use for their philanthropy. We work with lots of organizations in town on their endowments. We work with lots of families to direct charitable gifts for various benefits in the community. We manage 33 scholarship funds. It's surprising to me that we're not better known in the community. We've made thousands of grants. We've received in our short history about $130 million in charitable gifts and distributed $67 million. Those are big numbers in this community, especially in a 15-year period. We currently manage charitable assets of about $68 million. And one of the things I'm most proud of, and we've passed out our annual report, so you could take a peek at it, is our Board of Trustees and our Advisory Board, some of the most outstanding individuals from northern Nevada, many of them professionals, who help lead and guide the Community Foundation. So, again, thank you. We're very honored to be able to step in and help with the SMS Compassion Fund. And Tracy has more details on that for you.
Thank you, Chris. The fund was started very quickly. There was a bit of communication between Ms. Ratti and Chris on the evening that the event took place, and the fund was opened the next day. And when we can move quickly like that and opened the fund, we were able to receive donations from the community immediately. We, gifts to date, as of last Thursday, we're taking a tally every Thursday, were $16,319.84. So, we immediately had an organizational meeting on that Friday of the same week. So by the 25th, we were sitting around the table with members of Washoe County School District, City of Sparks, of City of Reno, and community members to determine who the committee would be that would work on the fund and have the decisions, have the responsibility for helping make the decisions about what would happen with the assets from the fund. We identified potential needs immediately, focusing on the families first, the victims' families first, and then the school. We did some research and learned from other emergency relief funds that were established to figure out what were common pitfalls, what were common successes, where the problems could be, and to watch out for. We identified potential sources of assistance for the families, and those were insurance sources, victims' fund sources, school district sources, any other sources that might be available for the victims. And then we determined a process for making awards from the fund so that the money could go out quickly and get it to the places where it was needed the most. We established a meeting schedule that for the time being was every Friday afternoon at 3:00. And we met that schedule very quickly, put it on our calendars. Everybody agreed to convene and get the work done fast. Donations came from a broad source, from individuals making $1 and $2 donations, up to community organizations holding fundraisers and raising money. We had three people in our staff who were finding out, they were taking telephone calls regularly from people calling in saying what they were planning to do to raise money and how they could best get it to the individual or individuals that they were interested in. So we were helping field those telephone calls. Many of those telephone calls were quite emotional because the people making the calls were brokenhearted for what had happened, and they were often in tears. So we were able to refer them to sources where they might get assistance if they needed it as well. Because of the information that was coming in on the telephone, we started to keep a log of all of the fundraisers that we started hearing about in the community, the ones that we knew would be specifically targeted for the SMS Compassion Fund, and for those that would be targeted for individual families specifically. In the past two weeks, I've been following up on all of those fundraisers, making phone calls, finding out the point of contact, because we feel it's very important that when donors put a dollar or two in something like this, that it gets to the right source. So I've been following up with various people who said they were going to conduct fundraisers to make sure that the assets that they collected were actually going to the intended sources. This particular bucket that I showed you came from the UNR-UNLV game, where they were collecting donations at the entry gate. And literally, it had a nice thick layer of change on the bottom, and bundles of $100 bills, and $5 bills, and tens, and twenties, and hundreds. And so, our staff sat around the table and counted over $5,200 in cash, including coin, one afternoon. It was quite an interesting experience for us. We've taken, the distributions have already gone out from the fund. Three checks were delivered to victims' families last week, and two more checks will go out this week. It was important, the committee felt, to get the money out as quickly as possible. And so, checks have been delivered. The families had an opportunity to ask questions about how the fund worked, what the Community Foundation's role was in it, so they could have a high degree of confidence that the fund was doing what it was intended to do, and that it was being administered the way that they could feel confident with. The weekly meetings concluded last week. We've now moved to a monthly schedule. We'll be reconvening in December because the donations have slowed down. And, you know, that is the unfortunate reality of what happens in an emergency situation. There's a tremendous outpouring at the beginning, and then it slows down. So the message the Community Foundation is sending to the community is to thank everyone for their donations, for their immediate, fast support, letting them know that the money has been distributed, but that there will be some long-term needs that, and if they are inclined to continue to donate, then the fund is still available for that purpose. We have attended a few fundraisers ourselves. I was at the Reno Aces Ballpark on Saturday to watch the shagging. I had no clue what shagging was, but now I can tell you all about it. And watching people and families out there hitting and throwing, catching baseballs and having a great time. Another member of our staff attended what was called a hike for Mike. That was a memorial hike in Sparks for, in memory of Mike, not designated for his family, but in memory of him over the weekend. And those assets will be coming to the Community Foundation for the SMS fund. And we are, again, as Chris said, this is what we do. This is how we like to help our community. We're honored to have been able to be put into place and get this going so quickly so that we could help out.
Okay, thank you. Julia, I think you had something to add?
So, I'm the third part of this presentation. So I ended up being the Chair of the Committee that oversaw the receiving of and distribution of the gifts. And so, the very first thing that I want to do is to say, to echo Chris and Tracy on their thanks to the community. Lots of folks did step in very quickly and make sure that funds came forward. I want to personally thank the Community Foundation. On the first day, we had already heard word of upwards of three funds that were being established, that nobody could trace the origins of the funds. Unfortunately, in situations like this, there's lots of opportunity for fraud. And it was one quick email, and Chris and Tracy were at the press conference the next day, not only willing to set up the fund and have it being, accepting credit card donations within 24 hours of the incident, but also educating the community about fraud and the potential for fraud in a situation like this. Because I have some prior relationship with Community Foundation, I just, I knew that they were the absolute right people to go to because they're professionals. They will make sure that the money is well taken care of, that we're following all charitable laws and standards, and that the donor's intent is met. And I'm incredibly proud of the Committee, which has acted responsibly, sympathetically, quickly, to make sure that the, those who were directly impacted by the events at Sparks Middle School received at least some relief and knew, not, it's more than just the money, that they knew, that they heard the message that the community cared about them, and they heard that message relatively quickly, without being intrusive on those families. So, I'm here, if anybody has any questions, I want to thank the City of Sparks for stepping up so quickly to help out the school district in this situation. And again, if anybody has any questions. We will continue the fundraising. $16,000 plus is a fabulous number on the one hand, but there are significant needs, and we want to make sure that we're meeting those needs. So you'll all be hearing more about fundraisers in the near future.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions? Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Oh, one more, sorry. I wanted to thank Jim Rundell, who also jumped in and helped a lot very early on. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to consent items. Does anybody wish to pull any? Okay, we're looking for a motion to approve 5.1 through 5.3. Ron?
Move to approve consent items 5.1 through 5.3.
Ed?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? See you none, please vote. Passes unanimously. We'll move on to general business. 6.1, consideration and possible acceptance of a traffic safety grant. Chief?
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, Members of Council, Brian Allen, Chief of Police for the record. This is another one of those opportunities that we like to come forward, is when the federal government through passed-down funds is going to allocate $134,000 to the Sparks Police Department for the Joining Forces Program. This will consist of 15 different traffic-related programs and campaigns throughout the year, including the national campaigns, or Click It, or Take It, or You Drink, You Drive, You Lose, along with regional, local, and statewide campaigns for distracted driving, construction zone, and other traffic-related incidences, all with the desired goal of reducing fatalities and injury accidents within our city. So if there's any questions, I'll answer them.
Okay, any questions? Ron?
There's no match, sir.
There is no match, sir.
Okay. I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Okay, move to approve and accept the $134,800 grant from the State of Nevada Department of Public Safety, Office of the Traffic Safety, to participate in the 2014 Joining Forces Program.
Ed?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? See you none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. 6.2, discussion and possible action on a resolution, 3248, supporting the Marketplace Fairness Act. Adam?
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, Members of the City Council, Adam Mayberry, Community Relations Manager, for the record. Item 6.2 addresses, allows for discussion and possible action on Resolution 3248, supporting the Marketplace Fairness Act. And so, just to give you a little background on the Marketplace Fairness Act, if you recall over the last several council meetings, we've had some discussion on the shared federal framework. That's that document that the jurisdictions and a number of local regional agencies have adopted and embraced to take to Washington, identifying a handful of priorities that are tied to specific legislation. The Marketplace Fairness Act is one of those pieces of legislation tied to, I believe, the economic development priority. It is an item that has not really been, has not come before this body before, and Councilman Kerrigan suggested that perhaps we ought to talk about it and perhaps possibly take a position, and so this allows us to do that. The Marketplace Fairness Act is essentially federal legislation that would mandate online internet retailers, as well as catalog and mail order retailers, to require that sales tax be charged by the consumers in the locality where the transaction is occurring. Currently, as you know, many online retailers don't charge sales taxes. Amazon.com currently does not charge a sales tax, although they have struck an agreement with the state, and later in 2014, they will. But, so this does two things essentially, levels a playing field for those brick-and-mortar retailers, and also has the opportunity to bring additional revenue to the state and to the counties and to the, through the local governments. There's a lot of numbers out there. There's, in the staff report, there's one news report that suggests that sales tax by Amazon.com alone would bring $16 million to the state in sales tax. Certainly, Washoe County wouldn't see all of that, but anywhere from 10% to 20% would be, probably be Washoe County's share, which would come to the local government. So, that's the thrust of the fairness, Marketplace Fairness Act. The suggested motion also includes that should you support this resolution, that it would also be part of the city's federal platform, not to be confused with the shared federal framework. So, we wanted to have that discussion too while we were talking about it. So, that, those conclude my remarks. I'll add too, the League of Cities, the National League of Cities, and Nevada League of Cities have also supported the legislation as well, so.
Okay, do we have any questions? I have one.
Yes.
If this passes, what percentage sales tax are they going to use in Nevada, since it's different in every county? Do you know?
Well, I don't know if Jeff is here. There he is. Mr. Kronk, would you mind addressing this question?
I believe it just increases the pot, doesn't it?
Yeah. Good afternoon, Jeff Kronk, Financial Services Director. As far as the sales tax percentage, the rate that would be charged, it would have to be charged per county. And honestly, that's one of the things that's been holding up this act, because it is kind of an onerous thing to require, especially a small online retailer. Think of like a mom-and-pop shop, you know, local corner market, will they have those also on the online community as well? And they certainly don't have the resources to be able to understand or have the database, have that availability as to collect the different sales taxes that would be necessary per county. So you can imagine how many, you know, counties are in Nevada, well, you know, exponentially nationwide. That's why this law's taken a long time to get through the works, honestly.
But do you think it's smart to see if we can get our legislature maybe to put something out there for online sales tax to cover the entire state instead of county by county? Would that make it easier?
Oh, you mean like an?
Yeah, like it's, say, an online sales tax is going to be 7.2% or whatever.
A statewide rate?
Yeah, for online, rather than, every county's different, I think. Would that make it easier?
That would be a pretty high wall to climb.
Probably not pass, right? It won't pass because it probably makes sense.
That would be a tough wall to climb, just because the county, all the counties are so unique, but.
Yeah, just a thought. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Adam, my question is for you, it's more to do with the airport, so sorry to catch you off-guard, or if I am catching you off-guard. Huge amount of revenues for the airport is made up from cargo, correct?
How much revenue does the airport make from cargo?
In percentages of all the revenues that the Airport Authority gets, there's a huge amount of that as cargo facilities.
I couldn't answer that off the top of my head, but I could certainly get that.
I don't have the numbers, but I know that that is one of your performance measures, is cargo. I mean, that's one of your measures every day, because your percentage of revenue is your cargo. I mean, that's your, for the size of the airport, you do a lot of cargo, that's why we're looking at cargo hubs here for it. Has the Airport Authority sat down and looked at the loss of revenue to the airport based upon the loss of online sales that may not happen once the tax goes into place?
You know, specifically, I don't know how to answer that, other than I know that the, this particular act is certainly front and center for the Airport Authority as well right now, because, as you know, clearly, there's a loss of revenue with the lack of the sales tax component, you know, through the cargo component. So, I don't know, I don't know the specific numbers, but that's certainly part of the discussion, yeah.
I think there's so much more here to look at than just sales tax revenue. That's easy. I mean, to say, okay, we're going to get 7% of everything is going to come back to us, and we're going to share that. It's real easy to say sales tax is really key, but there's another portion of the equation that if you take those sales away from online and you move them to in-store sales, or how, what percentage of people are actually going to do that, then how much in your fuel taxes, how much in your other taxes that come in, your employment, especially for the City of Sparks, in which we do so much in the warehousing business. I mean, that's, I think we have 100 auto facilities here that ship and sell parts on a daily basis, and most of those parts are 24-hour notice to get out. So I think there's a whole equation in here that before we say, yeah, let's support this thing, let's look what the downside revenue of this whole thing is. You know, is there downside revenue to our local governments, RTCs, airport, City of Sparks? I don't know how much Reno depends upon, you know, warehousing districts like we do, but I think there's a lot of untold numbers that people haven't sat down and looked at and said, well, let's just get this money in, let's just raise the taxes, get the money in. I think there's another story, so I should take a look what the balance sheet's going to be before they make those decisions. Thank you.
Julia?
Fair enough. I do think the local economic impact is important, of course, but I think that the act is bigger than the impact on any one entity. And I frankly think that the act is bigger than the impact to our personal coffers as the City of Sparks. While the increased sales tax locally would be helpful for us, I think we've spent a lot of time and energy in this community, not just at the City Council level, but at the chamber level, at the Economic Development Authority level. I know the mayors have both been very involved in supporting bi-local campaigns. In the near future, we're all going to be able to go down to the museum, automobile museum, and we're going to be able to support local businesses. And we've put a lot of time and energy into that. And so, regardless of where the tax dollars shift, or even if the airport were to lose some funding because cargo were to go down, the principle here is a principle of fairness and equity in taxing. Not necessarily even more taxes or less taxes, but equity in taxing. And so, I support this in that it creates a level playing field for our local businesses who are right now at a deficit because somebody can sit in their living room in their pajamas and pay less for the exact same item online because they don't have to pay sales tax. And so, it's more of a principle thing than an economics thing for me, though everything that I've read about it, the economics actually support the principle in that for local communities, you're going to see more jobs, which are going to mean more people spending money, which are going to mean more local economic impact. You get to some pretty significant complexity if you try to throw in fuel taxes and offset all of those things. So this is one that I'm willing to move forward on. National League of Cities supports it, Nevada League of Cities supports it. Bi-local has been studied regularly as a benefit for local communities, and I think we need to be on board.
Ed? Thank you. Ron?
You know, I wasn't understanding Councilman Schmidt's question, really, but being in retail, I think the level playing field is very important for everybody, and it's just not for this area. If everybody's charging sales tax, it changes the whole game, and it's across the state, across the country. So, I would support this, this motion for support, but I didn't understand your question, Ron, I just didn't, how does that relate to?
I think you're saying that if you vote this in, then less cargo will be coming into the state, basically.
Well, if you.
Because that's, you know, that's how you get stuff from online, from outside the state. In here is either by air, or by rail, or by truck. So if you're buying in-state, then that'll be less coming in from out-of-state. Is that pretty much what you said?
It's called economics. It's called follow the dollar, where the dollar generated, where the things happening. You know, I'm not so sure that taxation is an equitable deal to deal with. If it is, then we probably need to start with the federal income tax level, we can make it equitable for everybody, and that might be a great place to start. But, you know, it's called following the money. You know, it's cause and effect in economics. Every time you do something to one side of the equation, something's got to be done to the other side of the equation.
Well, I think that's just assuming that it's all coming in in Nevada, and nothing's going out in Nevada. That we're not, we're not collecting any sales tax from somebody in Colorado, which we would be, or they would, they'd be, they'd be charged their rate in Colorado. So, I don't know, you know, if everybody's doing the same thing, I don't know how it would affect shipping or anything like that, because everybody's doing it. So, maybe I just don't understand what you're, where you're going with this.
Okay. Any other, we have two speakers that would like to comment on this. Any other comments before I bring it back? Gentlemen, anything? Okay, we'll go to the public. Leah, come on down. Any other, we have two speakers that would like to comment on this. Any other comments before I bring it back? Gentlemen, anything? Okay, we'll go to the public. Leah, come on down. Oh, Trey, you want to sit there too? I was going to pick Leah first because I like her better than you, but that's okay.
No, I know. She's the case.
There you go.
Thanks. Good afternoon. My name is Leah Towkin. I'm with the Retail Association of Nevada, and we're in full support of Resolution 3248. We support enactment of the Federal Marketplace Fairness Act. We do believe that it will create a fair, equitable, nationwide system for the collection of sales and use taxes. And just for clarity, I want to point out that this is not a new tax. As a consumer, anytime you go online and purchase from a retailer who's not collecting sales tax on your behalf, you are supposed to fill out this form, and we don't need to take a showing of hands or anything, but it's just not happening, so.
Let's have a show of hands if anybody's even seen that form.
See this form, yeah. So you can go to the, from now on, now that you know, you can go to...
Yeah, thanks a lot for that.
You can go to Nevada Department of Taxation website and find that form. But online retailers are allowed, so they're allowed to let you do this, which obviously is a disadvantage for our brick and mortar counterparts that have to remit that tax on your behalf. So the only change to this act, and I think it was mentioned, is that it basically just changes the collection mechanism, and then it'll encourage, or it will require the online retailers to charge and collect that tax and remit it. The National Retail Federation recently released a report indicating that the growth rate in brick and mortar sales last year was about 2.8%, and the growth rate in online purchases was almost 15%. So you can see, there's no question that this is going to continue to, this area of online sales is going to continue to grow. Obviously, with technology, we're all changing the way that we do business, and I think the thing to point out here is that we have businesses that are choosing to locate here in Sparks. And in addition to, you know, the service that they provide our community, they're also typically, you know, they're paying property taxes, and they're paying all of the other taxes that we require, and they're investing in, you know, our Little League teams and our Girl Scouts and all of the other neighborly activities that truly make this a community. So again, just want to urge your support. We definitely believe that this will help level the playing field for the businesses that are located here in Sparks. Thank you.
Thank you. Trey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Members of council, for the record, Trey Abney representing the Chamber of Commerce. And that was a smooth move mentioning the Girl Scouts. That's lobbying 101. I like that. We stand in full support of this resolution. Again, this is not a new tax. This is tax, these are taxes that are always supposed to be being collected. We're talking about jobs and tax revenue for the city of Sparks, and I think the more, we want our brick and mortar businesses in the city of Sparks to be held to the same standard as every other business, and the tax rate is going to be based on where that person resides. And I associate myself with Councilwoman Ratty's comments. It's about buying local, but to Councilman Schmidt's point, you're not going to get, you're not going to move away from online retailing. I don't see this, as long as, as Mr. Schmidt said, as long as everybody's playing under the same rules in every locality, in every state, we're only going to be moving more toward online retailing. So I don't see this as chasing anybody away from doing that. In fact, if it does, and more people are driving around this community, shopping at brick and mortar stores, then maybe they're going to be paying more gas taxes for more road projects. But it's an interesting conversation to have, but it is about fairness. It's not just about who gets the money. It's about placing our guys here, located here, providing jobs here, on the same playing field as a company somewhere else. So we stand in full support. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have a question here. Ron?
No, I was going to say that the increase in the online shopping is not only due to, you know, not paying taxes, it's convenience and people, you know, there's some stores or shops that you want to deal with, they don't live here, they don't have places here, and it's easier to go online and do it. But the level playing field is very important to all, everybody in retail, you know that, and that's why I support this.
Thank you both.
Can I comment on that real quick?
Sure.
I was just going to say, and I think part of the problem too, that wasn't mentioned between the two of us, you know, there, people that are shopping online are sometimes using the physical retailers to go in and do their comparison shopping, and so our retailers are having to have knowledgeable, trained staff, you know, that can help them out, and they get all the way to the point that they're about to make the purchase, and then they leave the store and go home and order online. So hopefully this will help keep them in the stores. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. Ed?
Well, I think, for me, this makes a lot of sense to level the playing field. I think some of the things that Councilman Schmidt's talking about, and I don't know that that's going to make too much difference, because you can bring in, as a free port that we are in the Sparks Reno area, that you can bring stuff in and you don't have to pay tax on it. It's not until you assemble it and sell it to someone that you have to pay tax on it. So there's, to me, it just makes sense. I'm one of those guys who likes to sit in my living room in my pajamas and order stuff online. Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, in pajamas.
Okay, I don't even, I want to put that out of my head right now, that vision, but go ahead.
So I'm in favor of supporting this.
Okay. Julia?
I move to endorse the Resolution number 3248 in support of the Marketplace Fairness Act and include the Marketplace Fairness Act in the city's federal legislative platform.
We have a second. Ed?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Ed, it passes four to one with Ron Schmidt opposed. Thank you. Number 6.3, first reading.
Bill number 2664, an ordinance amending Chapter 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to add Chapter 20.05.1305 defining quantitative requirements, amending Chapter 20.070.020 to revise criteria associated with minor deviations and adding a new section 20.09 titled "Major Deviation," including the process, application requirements, and findings to allow in certain circumstances deviations up to 50% from a quantitative standard, providing other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you. This is the first reading for Bill number 2664. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, November 25th. Moving on, we'll go to seven, public hearing in action items. 7.1, consideration of possible approval of an abandonment of approximately 12-foot by 30-foot portion of disc drive.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Members of the council, for the record, John Martin, City Engineer. Before you this afternoon with a request from Sparks Galleria Properties LLC, the owners of the Galleria, for an abandonment of approximately 358 square feet of right-of-way on Disc Drive beyond the south side of Disc Drive between Galleria Parkway and Pyramid Highway. You've probably all seen this piece of right-of-way, it's their 90-foot sign. The property owners are currently in a transaction to sell the property, and as such had done an ALTA survey on their property, and it came to their attention that the foundation for the large Galleria sign is actually encroaching in the disc drive right-of-way. Therefore, they made the request to us to see what we could do to help them clear title. It has been reviewed by myself and Dave Vil, our contract real property agent, and we are in support of this small abandonment so that they can get clean title and continue with the transaction. I do have our photos of the site if the council would like to see them, to see exactly. I know the attachments to your staff report are done by a survey and kind of stark, but that's what's required for the legal description. As I said before, staff has reviewed it. We recommend approval, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay, Ron Schmidt?
I definitely don't have any problem with this, just a question, was this, was it built per plans submitted to the city, or was there something that you missed on the first time, when we first go around?
John, can I have the overhead, please? Councilman Schmidt, back in your construction days, you've probably seen this a time or two.
Couple of times.
I reviewed the original plans that came in for the sign. And the building plans were perfect. The location of that foundation was supposed to be 10 feet from the disc drive right-of-way, and I am, I don't know for a fact, but I suspect that when they staked it in the field, they did it from the back of curb instead of the actual property line, and there, we ended up with the encroachment.
Not a problem. I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
We need a public...
I'm sorry, sorry.
Go ahead.
Any other questions? Okay, go ahead.
I move to approve the vacation. The portion of disc drive is outlined by staff.
We have a second? Julia?
I believe we have to have a...
I believe we need a public hearing with this.
It doesn't say that on here, that's what I was going to say.
It's agenda, I'm sorry, seven.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to make a comment on this? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back. Ron, would you like to restate your motion since I messed that up?
I'll keep it the same as last time.
Okay, do we have a second? Julia?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now any discussion? Okay, seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to planning and zoning public hearings in action. Items 8.1, PCN 13018, consideration of possible approval of a tentative map request for 42 single-family lots.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Tim Thompson, Senior Planner, for the record. Before you today is a tentative map request to allow for a 42-lot, single-family residential subdivision. The property is located in the Kylie Ranch South Plan Development. This would be the intersection of Disc Drive and Sparks Boulevard. This is known as the Pinnacles. The Pinnacles had a, an original tentative map. A final map was recorded for Phases 1 and Phase 2, however, a final map was not recorded for Phase 3, and the tentative map expired. This is a review of that expired tentative map to allow them to finish out Phase 3. Again, 42 lots, and staff is recommending approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Ron?
Where's Sparks Boulevard? Is that, right where it says project site, that sign? Show me Sparks Boulevard running out to Pyramid.
Sparks Boulevard is here. This would be the disc Sparks Boulevard intersection, the Scolarius, which I believe you're familiar with.
You know where it's at.
The Wells Fargo Bank, and then out Sparks Boulevard, and then this would be La Salta is here, Sepulveda Elementary School.
Okay.
Ed?
I'm curious where the North Truckee drain is.
Comes right down through...
Other side.
Through here.
Okay. So if I, if I'm picturing this in my mind, that sits up on a little rise there.
Correct.
Okay. Yes.
Pinnacle, if you will.
Yeah, it's a big rise. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Any substantial changes from the original map at all, or is this just refiling of the original map?
This is just refiling of the map. The area was already mass graded, so there's no lot, change in lot count or anything of that nature. The only thing that we did change was a condition of approval related to the architectural elevations. In situations like this, where we have half-developed subdivisions, the staff is working hard to have that continuity. We're more concerned about, about the continuity of what's there and what is being built there in that transition to maintain the quality of that neighborhood.
It'll be nice to see that project get finished, and that area cleaned on up with it right now. Is there any timeframes at all talked about, starting?
There are currently two builders finishing off Phases 1 and 2, and I would imagine that as those two phases are completed, that one and/or both, possibly even a third, would move into Phase 3 and start working on completing that.
Thank you.
Schmidt?
Yeah, and I may be out of line here, attorney can tell me this. If I get any complaints at all, it's from the Kylie, about the Kylie Ranch folks, on Sparks Boulevard about the dead trees, and we're not getting any response to getting cleaned up, and, where's Neil? And complaints every day, so what can we do about that? Is anybody here from Kylie?
You want to hold that off for comments from the council?
Well, it's not, it's not dealing with this agenda item. I think it'd be more appropriate for comments from council at the end of the meeting.
Okay, all right.
Just reminding them, remind you.
Okay. I'm forgetful.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing, so we'll open up to the public. Anybody from the public wish to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Ron Schmidt?
I move to approve the tentative map associated with PCN 13018, adopting findings T1 through T12, and the facts supporting these findings set forth in the staff report, and subject to conditions of approval 1 through 19 as listed by the Planning Commission staff report.
Do we have a second? Julia?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. It passed unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to 8.2, PCN 13019, city of Sparks, second reading and possible discussion of Bill number 2662, an ordinance for a voluntary annexation.
Jim Rundell, Senior Planner, to present this request. The city council has, it's been a while since we've done an annexation, but I wanted to point out this one is from MNST Family Trust for approximately just under three acres in the, what is currently in the unincorporated county, but in the city of Sparks annexation It is what, some of us, here is the annexation program. The orange areas on this map are what's already annexed into the city of Sparks, and the tan areas are areas that are in the sphere of influence outside of the East Truckee River Canyon. Now, the reason the East Truckee River Canyon is still on this map, even though it is no longer in our sphere, is because the annexation program was approved for seven years, so the council will see in probably 2014 or 15, an amendment to the annexation program. But today, we are talking about an area in between Sparks Boulevard and Vista Boulevard as what we refer to as Shadow Mountain Area, and it's on this area. So this, this annexation is, as I said, 2.6 acres, and it's highlighted here. This is Sparks Boulevard. Vista Boulevard does not quite come up on the map, it would be up in this area up here. And this is Satellite and Shadow Lane. So the properties we're talking to, talking about today are those two properties as exhibited on the map. Staff has reviewed the annexation and was able to make a case for all of the required findings. The annexation would be of existing property, or of a property with existing residential on the property. The property does not have city sewer or municipal water. However, there, the applicant does not have any intentions of intensifying the site. Intensifying would be adding, adding units to the property. If that ever were to occur, the property would have to be upgraded to municipal water and sewer systems. The fiscal analysis that was done on the site, surprisingly to me, showed that the city would make approximately $100, $111 a year in revenue. While that's pretty insignificant in regard to the budgets that you guys approve, what was surprising to me is that it actually showed a surplus based on the services that we provide. But that may be because we are not providing the municipal sewer systems to the site at the time. But most importantly, staff was able to make all of the required findings. The Planning Commission has forwarded a recommendation of approval to the city council, and the applicant is here in attendance if you have any questions of the applicant. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to make a comment? The applicants wish to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the city council for action. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I move to adopt Bill number 2662 and approve the annexation request associated with PCN 13019, to annex approximately 2.1, excuse me, 2.6 acres into the city of Sparks, based on findings A1 through A3, and the facts supporting these findings as set out in the report.
Ron Schmidt?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Move on to 8.3, a public hearing, second reading, the discussion of possible action of CA 313, Bill number 2663, an ordinance amending Title 20.43 of the Sparks Municipal Code.
Thank you, Mr. Protem. This ordinance amendment, I think I can summarize this very, with layman's terms, the city council adopted...
council adopted a new building code. And that new building code changed when a building permit is required for structures such as a shed. It went from 120 square feet to 200 square feet in the building code. However, the zoning code says you need a building permit when you construct something over 120 square feet. So the two codes aren't in, aren't talking to each other, if you will. So the direction was for staff to fix this. The Planning Commission has forwarded a recommendation to change the zoning code from 120 square feet to 200 square feet so that the building and zoning codes are the same. And that concludes my presentation.
Jim, I had one question on this. What can the height be now?
Well, the height, the height cannot exceed the height of the main structure. And then typically, these are constructed in single-family residential neighborhoods, so it can't exceed the height of the main structure. The main structures are typically limited at 30 feet, and that would be for, say, like two stories, but it could vary between zoning districts. But most importantly, Councilman Kerrigan, is it can't exceed the height of the main structure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any questions? As long as it's two foot by two foot and 30 feet tall, right? That's how you get the 200 square feet.
It is, it is just the footprint, so...
You can have a three-story...
Well, you, depending on what you meant by three stories, but if you...
30 feet?
Single family residential typically, for a two-story structure, would be limited at, at 30 feet. So I guess you could have a two-story accessory structure.
You can have a 10 by 20, 30 feet tall.
But it would be tough to, tough to meet the, meet certain codes regarding stairs and that kind of thing to get to the second structure.
There's always a code. There's always a hook, right?
There is.
Okay.
Okay, this is a public hearing. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to make a comment on this?
There has to be.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for action. Anyone? Mr. Smith?
I move to adopt Bill Number 2663, amending the Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to code to increase the size of accessory structures requiring a building permit from 120 square feet to 200 square feet.
Ed?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to number nine. Sean, do we have a closed-door session?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to number 10, comments. Do we have any comments from the public? Public first? Okay. Seeing none, we'll bring it, 10.2, comments from the city council. Mr. Smith, go for it.
Okay, you know, we've had, because my store where I work is located on Sparks Boulevard, I get complaints daily, on a daily basis, from people about the dead trees on the median on Sparks Boulevard. And I tell them that it's not our median, that it is owned and maintained by Kylie Ranch. Is that correct?
In most cases, yes. I have good news for you, though, Councilman Schmidt.
Okay, so what's the good news?
It's winter time. Bad news is spring's coming.
I know it. But we need to reach out to Kylie Ranch. I know that we have been, and nothing's happening. We need to get something to happen on this. I'm up to here with it, to tell you the truth.
I understand. We're working hard to get a hold of you.
It can't be that hard to get, to put a crew out there and get them done. And then my second question or comment would be, if they can't get it done in a reasonable amount of time, can we do it and bill them?
Neil is nodding yes.
We can? Then I suggest we give them two weeks, and if they can't do it, we do it.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments? Oh, Neil, do you have a comment?[1727.33]